Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rope.
Alderman Tobin.
Here.
Alderman Jean-François.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Rand Casoon.
Here.
Alderman Kleiner.
Here.
Alderman Green.
Here.
Alderman Witt.
Here.
Alderman Massey.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
Quorum's present.
Okay, approval minutes?
We have the minutes from July 19th, 2022.
Motion by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Witt, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Correspondence?
Nothing this evening.
For the goodness of the city, the mayor has a presentation.
I'd like the Bafa family to join me up here if they would please. And Anthony, maybe I'll let you introduce your family.
Okay, this is my son, Thomas, my sister Donna, my nephew Eric, his wife Kathleen, and little Antonio.
Thank you, thank you Anthony. And tonight's one of those hard to say goodbye nights, I read that in one of the articles, of the several articles that were written about the Bafa family in over the last few weeks, and actually, the restaurant opened, Harry Truman was president in 1951. And the next slide is, this is 1958, you know, we were a, Middletown's always been an immigrant city, first German, then Irish, then of course Italian, which I'm more biased to, that period of time, recently, growing Latino population and growing Asian population, so like most small cities, or most cities in general, we've been incubators of the immigrant community that, and that's what makes cities livable, what populates us, and what generates an interest in people opening businesses, and that's what the Bafa family did way back when they opened 71 years ago. 1958 happens to be the year I was born, so that shows you how long ago this was, and they're located in, as you know, Middletown's a little Italy, just on the outskirts, and most of us in that area, especially in that neighborhood, but throughout the city and throughout the area grew up knowing Tony's Pizza, Tony Bafa's Pizza, so it's a long tradition. This is a picture of Tony's Last Saturday, people lined up trying to get in, all right? Actually, it's the Diamond Jubilee in 1963, marching by the restaurant, as you can see, the restaurant wasn't expanded out at that time, it was a little, the little restaurant right in the middle, I believe, right Tony?
Yeah.
Yep, and so, they've gone through an expansion process, so as Middletown grew, Tony Bafa's Restaurant grew, and we both enjoyed that growth, and as you know, today, this is Tony Bafa's Restaurant. This slide is just to give you a little background on the restaurant and the family. Seventy-one years ago, Antonio Tony Bafa and his wife Antoinette set up a small Italian restaurant on Railroad Avenue in Middletown, having nothing but, as they said, two tables and two nickels to rub together, and their daughter Donna Bafa said their daughter Donna Bafa maybe. Antoinette ran the restaurant while Tony was in the kitchen, preparing homemade meals for hungry patrons. Everything was made from scratch, including the pastas, breads, and sauces. Maybe and her brother Anthony Bafa Jr. continued that tradition of homemade meals when they took over the family restaurant. Their parents passed away in 2012 and 2019 respectfully, and their children, with their families of all of their own, have chosen jobs outside the restaurant business, but still help out at the restaurant on weekends. And now the siblings are getting ready to retire, and this is their last month in business here in the city of Middletown. So we wanted to acknowledge that, and also acknowledge the founders of the restaurant. Mr. and Mrs. Bafa, Mr. Bafa, well-known at the YMCA for many, many years, was honored by the YMCA a few years back, and Mrs. Bafa, of course, the hard-working front face of the restaurant for many, many years. Here we have the entire Bafa family, or maybe not all of the Bafa family, but a good part of them, including their brother Mario, I think is third from the left, right?
Yeah.
And Mario and Tony and I were all St. Josephites.
Yep.
St. Joseph's School many, many years ago, Donna, I think, is a little older than I am, so we didn't have the shared experience of St. Joseph's, but it was all one big neighborhood over there back then. And this, of course, is the last picture that we have of Tony and, I mean of Donna and her daughter. So we wanted to say goodbye, in a way, from the city of Middletown, and there's a picture of your dad here, I think, saying goodbye, and we also wanted to present you with a plaque here, in honoring your years of commitment to our community and all you've done, not only as restaurateurs, but as people in our community, in keeping our community, you know, a place for people to come, people to enjoy, and a place to get a good meal, and also good socialization. So we wanted to thank you, Maria has this.
Oh, isn't that nice?
We'll present it to Donna, this also contains the key to the city, I don't know if people can see it, but it's a picture of mom and dad, 71 years, and a picture of the restaurant today, along with the key to the city, St. Tony Bafa's Restaurant.
Oh, man. Isn't that nice? Thank you.
This means the world to us.
Thank you. That's all I want to say, is thank you to the mayor and to the council for recognizing us, we're all extremely tired from the amount of work that we do, and we appreciate everything that you guys do, so thanks again, and we're going to take a little time to ourselves after we retire.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much, we appreciate you recognizing us, we're going to miss the restaurant, I think, I don't know what I'm going to do, I'm used to go, 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 I don't know, well, you'll see us around, I guess we'll go to the mayor's now for possible, that's it. Thank you again, everyone.
Thanks again, everybody.
Thank you.
We'll take a minute break.
Sure. We'll take a short, five minutes. All right, mayor's remarks?
Well, the only thing I have this evening is a letter from Garnett Health regarding some changes that they were required to notify both the city, the county, and surrounding communities regarding some change in service at the facility, so I'll present it to Rick for the record, I know we've received a few emails on it, but I don't know, obviously the state representatives are also notified, and the county exec, I don't know what we as a city can do, but it's, you know, it is a private business, but they do have some regulations regarding what services are being provided, and I assume they're not eliminating pediatrics, which some people had called, they're just not doing the pediatric service as doctors.
Outpatients.
They're doing, as outpatient, correct, so this might be clear for people to read, if you can post it online, Rick, and get more clarity to the public on what changes are being proposed, and we can direct people's comments to our state legislators, and we'll also probably be making a comment on it, so I'll leave the letter here for you to post online for people to read. Any questions?
Any question for the mayor? Thank you, mayor. Remarks of department heads, economic development?
Dave, want to come up? Yeah, if you don't mind, he's a better spokesman than I am regarding Run for Downtown.
I saw him in the back.
Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor, if you and Linda don't decide to open on Sundays, my wife and I are going to starve to death. I want to remind everybody here attending tonight, and the public, you know, in whole, that Saturday morning is the 16th Annual Marshall and Sterling Insurance Run for Downtown. Most people know that it's a four-mile run and walk, starting and finishing in the heart of our downtown, but what a lot of people don't realize is how it's so much more than that, you got to come out, you got to see what's going on downtown that morning, we have a fantastic post-race party, and a great celebration of our community. If you're not a runner, if you're not a walker, you can come down with a $10 donation, we'll give you a bracelet, and you can be a part of everything, you got to see what's going on Saturday morning, Run for Downtown, and if you want more information, r, the number four, dt.org. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
To piggyback on that, actually, everything begins Thursday evening with in-person registration, and that's going to be at the Run for Downtown Park on North Street, and there'll be music and entertainment by Liza Doolittle Trio from 6 to 8, and then Friday, again, registration and music by The Vibe. The Friday night concert is going to be held at Run for Downtown Park this Friday from 6 to 8, and then at 8 o'clock, Jefferson Starship takes the stage at the Paramount Theater, and we're all excited, this is, we've been promoting, this is the Rock, Roll, and Run Weekend, and it's been a good co-promotion with the Run for Downtown folks, and we're looking forward to a spectacular weekend. We've been posting notices for the downtown businesses, road closures, and, you know, things of that sorts, and where parking can be. Also, next week, we are going to have another ribbon cutting, it's the Dance Annex on Railroad Avenue, so check our posts on our Facebook, on the Bid Facebook and City, and that's going to take place, the ribbon cutting, at 3:30 next Tuesday. Also, on the community development front, the CDA project, the Taucot property, closed yesterday, so we have a new homeowner in that newly renovated home, and we're looking forward to a couple more properties that we're doing that'll be wrapping up soon as well, and that's all I have for this evening.
Question for Maria, Alderman Kleiner?
Hi, Maria, one quick question on the, since the Friday music's going to be at Run for Downtown Park, will North Street stay open during that, or?
Yes, North Street will stay open, unless there is overcrowding, then work with the PD if anything needs to be shut down, but if you're going back to 2019, when we had the event, we also had a street art festival that year, and then we were going to continue it, but then COVID hit, so hopefully we can ramp up next year to do the same, but right now, these are the plans for this Friday.
Okay, I was asked that at a constituent meeting, so.
Yep.
Wanted to clear it up, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you, Maria. DPW Commissioner?
Good evening, council, mayor, city of Middletown residents, whoever is watching. We'll start off reporting to Alderman Massey about the reservoir levels, obviously, we're having a very dry period in here, and we're very concerned, our reservoirs are still at 86%, so we're still in good shape, but the trouble with the drought, you don't know when you are in a drought, so this thing could continue on and on and on, and develop into severe drought, so we're watching it very carefully, and hopefully, hopefully we will have some rain very soon, and that will alleviate our concerns, but it's something to concern about, so if you don't, you know, we're not doing any restrictions or anything like that, but if you don't have to water the grass, don't water it, you know, try to conserve, it's always a good idea to conserve water, anyway. Another project, the construction of a 24-inch high-pressure water main on 211 and Manhattan Avenue, the work is progressing, and now we're just almost at the end of the game in here, just testing compaction and making sure there is no settlement, so we can go and pave, and for the council president, unfortunately, the paving is scheduled for the middle of next month, that's the availability of the contractor, unfortunately, we'll try to push it as much as we can, but that's where they are, the schedule as it stands right now. Shuangang Reservoir, Shuangang Dams, one dam in there, it has to be upgraded because of certain deficiencies, we have been working on this project for a couple of years for the design, and we had to incorporate flow-measuring devices to be as part of the project, because the DEC required them, so that has been added, the DEC approved the plans, and we're going to be going out for public bid within two weeks, so before you tonight, this council has a resolution authorizing the mayor to engage CT Mill, which is a design engineer, the consultant on the dam, to conduct the construction inspection, because it's very critical when you start building dams, or widening spillways, or raising dams, that's extremely important in there to test the material, and test compaction, and to make sure everything is done properly, so we would appreciate your support for that resolution that's coming up. Milling and paving, I just want to mention, if you recall, the last few weeks, the heat was tremendous in there, it was really in very bad shape, even private contractors, boys, his people would not come back to work, you know, after that warm spill, and he had to get more different people in there, however, our guys, DPW guys in the street department, and the water department helping them out, they persevered, and they continued to work, along with the private contractor who's doing the paving, and I just want to mention that, because now the heat is almost, the heat spill is gone, and I just wanted to remind our guys in the street department and water department that we appreciate what they're doing, and the private contractors as well, we appreciate what they're doing, and they're doing a tremendous job at the risk of their health, but we appreciate that, and they're not forgotten. Right now, our paving program is up to about 70% complete, so there is still some areas we have to bring the milling machine back, and we are trying to fit that in the schedule of the milling machine to get it done. There's a resolution tonight awarding removal of debris for TAM Enterprises. What happened in August 8th, there was partial collapse of one of the walls for 21 Academy Avenue, so we had to scramble in there, demolish the building because it was unsafe, and we had to work with the Department of Labor in there in order to get certain variances, in order to remove that debris, asbestos-containing material, so before you tonight, there's a request for a resolution to award the bid to TAM Enterprises, the price per ton, and request environmental, to monitor the air and sampling and testing, and by the way, this project, this building was budgeted, if you recall, it was included in our budget, we have about $900,000 for demolition. This building was targeted by the mayor and I, we slowed down demolishing it, because there was a potential buyer for the building, although we did not see the, you know, the potential for selling the building, but somebody believed that he could do something with it, that's why we did not demolish it any sooner, because there was a potential buyer for it, but thank God, what happened, happened, and now the building is down, and now we have to take it out. We have a request, again, for a million dollar there for, just for, as a cash flow, to sustain the $27 million project that we have for the traffic operation, so it's temporary borrowing, there's going to be long-term borrowing coming soon in there for this project, and we will discuss that as a separate note later on, and the mayor will be probably addressing that, or the mayor and I, or, so, another project, another resolution before you tonight is approving agreement with T-Mobile to remove their antennas of our water storage tank on Highland Avenue Extension, put it in a different pole, and so that we can get to upgrading our Highland Avenue water storage tank, repainting it, doing all the maintenance that is required for it, and then they will take that, they'll take the antenna back, and they will put them back on Highland Avenue tank after we're done paving it. So with that being said, we're getting ready, once we have all these things lined up, we are going to bid, put out for bid, public bid, replacing Mountain Avenue Tank, replacing High Barney Tank, and repainting Highland Avenue Tank, so that's coming up very soon, hopefully, within a couple of weeks, if we can get it together, we have a couple of easements we have to sign, and then we will be able to, be able to put the projects out for public bid. So we're very busy, obviously, you've got the eight and a half million dollars in there, bond, coming on the first resolution, that's only to allow us to apply for the grant, hopefully we'll be successful in getting it, and so we're very busy, the entire DPW is very busy, as the rest of the city, you can drive around and you can see the construction. With that being said, I will stop if there is any.
Question for Jacob?
Questions?
Thank you, Jacob. Fire chief?
Good evening, everyone, we're up to 652 calls for the year so far, we just had a third alarm fire over on DeWitt Street, the homeowner did get severely injured, but is still hanging on. As Dave and Maria brought up, the Run for Downtown, the fire department's involved, other departments are involved, it's a first responder challenge, we hold the cup, Middletown holds the cup, if you think you can take it from us, my man Drew over here, he's going to be holding the cup at the end. I didn't say which cup, all right? That's right, the beer cup. And for everybody, October 21st, 6:00 PM, inspection night for the firehouses, it doesn't interfere with your game, okay? Other than that? Other than that, any questions?
Any question for the fire chief? All right, chief, thank you. City treasurer?
Hi, good evening, everyone, buenas noches, I just wanted a chance to say thank you for my appointment, I didn't have the chance, I'm sorry that I missed that meeting, so I just wanted to say muchisima, muchisima gracias, and also, there is a resolution, we just created sort of a new payroll position, payroll manager position, this position is confidential, and it is exempt, and we got it approved by the state, we are looking to hire as soon as possible, our current payroll coordinator is retiring at the end of September, so this is something that we are looking to sort of expedite in the meantime, the payroll position will entail personnel, benefits, payroll budgeting, the payroll process, so this person will oversee all these different functions, and we are excited about this, because this will allow us the opportunity to sort of strengthen our payroll, not a department, a division, within the Treasury Department, so I just wanted to see if you had any questions about the position.
It'll also help the employees, right, throughout the city?
Absolutely, absolutely, we are looking to serve our city employees, and making sure that their information is confidential, and also provide them with the best benefits, their options out there, and making sure that we follow Department of Labor regulations accordingly.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Police chief?
Good evening, just a few things this evening, I do have a couple resolutions being presented this evening, hopefully be able to support them. The last couple of weeks, we've been doing a lot of our outreach, our summer outreach, we've done several barbecue, pop-up barbecues, August 2nd was Night Out Against Crime, was an outstanding turnout, although I wasn't there, I'm told, everything was amazing, kudos to Sergeant Welch, she did a great job putting that all together and organizing everything. We also just concluded our third class of the Junior Police Academy, Officer Galley did an amazing job hosting all three of those classes, each one was a different age group, really great turnout this year, she did an amazing job for us. Also, last week, our police officer exam results came out, the test was given in April, we just received the exam, so, or the exam results, so we'll be looking to move forward with the next phase of our hiring process, which would be the agility test and background packets, so we are getting a lot of feedback right now from people that did take the exam, a lot of questions and comments on what comes next. Last thing I have is, just for further information on the police department, more detailed information, we do have a monthly police commission meeting, it is this Thursday, 4:30, right here in this room, for anybody wants additional information on the police department, other than that, I have no questions, unless you have questions.
Question for the police chief. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Superintendent Recreation?
Good evening, everyone, before you tonight, we have a donation, we'd like to thank the Animal Health Center for making a $1,000 donation, we're actually going to put that towards an ice skate sharpener for this winter, we're going to have our first season of the ice skating rink, and as you can imagine, there's many expenses that come along with having a refrigerated ice skating rink, so that will be very helpful towards a lot of the items that we do need for that. Also like to thank everybody who's made a donation to the Recreation Department for camperships, this summer, we were able to give 13 children one week free of camp, to either sports camp, spirit camp, or little people playtime. Also like to thank Recap, who lightened our load on a lot of the parents applying for scholarships, because Recap was very giving this summer with sending kids to camp for full weeks, as long as they applied and qualified under them with their financial need. On maintenance, Wills Siller Field, if you haven't been by, go by during the week, in the evenings, it is very crowded, it's great to see the field up and in use, and the concession stand going, kids are out there practicing, it looks great, we are still watering the field, sorry, Jacob, we are trying to conserve water, but being it's a new field, we do got to keep that grass and let it set, but we are being conservative with it. Concession stand is almost complete, they got to install a counter, and a few more pieces of metal need to be installed to get the concession stand in, bathrooms are functioning, but still need dividers in them, so a little bit more work on the bathrooms, but they are functioning, the kids can go to the bathroom, and there is running water in there. Goalposts were actually delivered today, we've had the bleachers, our maintenance department is going to install and assemble them within this week, and then next week is going to be the installation of both of those. Davage Park, if you've noticed, the caution tape, we did take out that old piece of playground equipment, there was a lot of pieces missing, and it was so dated, we couldn't update and get any of those new pieces in, so last year, Christine Brinkerhoff did put in for that new equipment, it's been on back order, so it's finally in, our maintenance department did what we had in install, actually, I spoke to them today, and it's starting tomorrow on that new piece of equipment at Davage Park. If you go by the pool at Frank Shorter Way, you can see the walkway is done, they are just beautifying it now, adding woodchips in it to give it a better look, it's unfortunate, please get the word out there, that have people use that walkway and keep them out the street, if you see somebody, just let them know that's what it's there for, we are looking into getting a sign for people who are walking, so they can see that sign when they're coming, to use that walkway and avoid the roadway right there. There was some concern about dead trees at Academy Avenue Park, and the wood line in Davage Park of the houses, we are scheduled to get those trees down, we don't have a date, but we are on the schedule. Dog park, a lot of concerns about the water, right now, the water on the inside of the park is shut off, thank you to DPW, the water department, who put a shut-off valve in there, we, right now, they have the chain of spigots that are on the inside, so there's an automatic shut-off to prevent a lot of the puddling and pooling and flooding that's been happening in there, a lot of complaints always on that water, but what's happening is, people go there, they turn it on, they leave it, it pools, it runs, it runs, it runs, it doesn't get the dry, and you have a big muddy mess, but there is water on the outside of the dog park, there is a water fountain for people and dogs, a smaller one for dogs, so you can get the water when you are there visiting. And just with our maintenance updates, a big thank you to John Bianchi and the maintenance crew, I got to be honest, I didn't think Wills Siller Field was going to be ready by this season, but it is ready, so thank you to John, thank you for our maintenance department, and thank you to Jacob and his guys also, with their assistance. Camps wrapped up, sports camp, spirit camp, little people camp are all done, huge thank you to our staff, it was a great summer, Jim Kelly, our longtime director, did retire from sports camp, we did have a new director coming in this summer who was learning, hopefully we'll have him for a few years before he retires, but it was great, thank you to Manhattan Middle School, their food services and their custodians, they were wonderful with assisting us at sports camp all summer, giving us the hot meals, that was a great addition to it. And please pay attention, we're going to be sending out emails to anyone who has registered this past summer, with our deadlines changing, I know it's hard, a lot of families are paycheck to paycheck and make the weekly payments, but there is a lot of work on our end, on getting the camps, all the registrations, all the immunizations up to date, so we are going to push that registration deadline up, instead of that Friday at noon, we are going to push it to the Thursday, so that is cutting back, we do get those at least 10 phone calls of very angry parents that can't get their kids in camp because they missed that deadline, but we're going to be giving parents a year's notice on this one, so be ready. Playgrounds end Friday, we are going to be revamping our playground program, it's hit and miss. It's hit and miss, we go to some parks during the day, and there's nobody there, but then you go to Maple Hill or Davage, and our counselors are non-stop with the kids, so we are gonna be looking to revamp that program also for next summer. And pools, our last thing, program open this summer closes August, Sunday, August 28th is our last day of pools. Any questions?
Any questions? Holman Witt?
It's, it's a shame nothing's going on this summer.
Yeah, there's nothing for the kids to do, ever.
Can, can you give your best estimate on, like, total pool attendance for the summer? If you had to guess?
I could, it's more of a, what we're bringing in, that I have, on what the money's coming in, rather than-
I mean, attendance.
Attendance. Attendance, I, I don't know, no. I'm sorry.
No, it's all right. I took a shot.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, great job. All right, city clerk?
Just a quick reminder that there is a primary, early elect, early voting for the 18th Congressional District primary underway at the Middletown Senior Center. Primary, the voting will go through Sunday, August 21st. Take a look at the Orange County Board of Elections website for exact hours, and then the actual primary date is August 23rd, and voting will be at the, throughout Middletown from 6:00 to 9:00 PM.
All right, any question for Rick? All right. No public hearings, remarks of Alderman, Aldman Witt?
Thank you. Just very quickly, wearing my daytime hat, just to remind everybody that the first day of school is Tuesday, September 6th. So there's information about going back to school on our district website and on our Facebook page. We invite anyone with questions to please call your buildings, there, those buildings are staffed all year round, and it's better to get the correct and accurate answer, more than one that might be just speculation. Also, tomorrow night is graduation, and I believe the number is 22 more kids who will be earning their diplomas tomorrow, so congratulations to them. Thank you.
That's awesome. Holman Green?
Thank you. First off, I wanna thank Alderman Kleiner for handling our constituents meeting solo while I was on vacation, which I always seem to do right before the run for downtown, so I always eat way too much lobster and seafood and get nice and round right before I have to do a four-mile, four-mile walk, we'll do, we, let's call it that this year. So, I'll be there nonetheless, no way, yeah. We'll see, we'll see, you know, spirited walk. Now, I really am looking forward to it, it's gonna be a great event this Saturday, and that's all I have for this evening, thank you.
Aldman Kleiner?
Thank you, and thank you, Rick. We were headed out for early voting, about 5 o'clock tonight, and I heard this strange noise, and I look up, and there's a blimp over our house that I think was much bigger than the house, it blocked out half the sky, so I don't know what it was about, but the Goodyear blimp was circling through town today. But people for early voting were excellent, so I wanna thank them for the work they do. Also wanna thank Senator Scoofus, who did a town hall at TAPD, I think it was a couple Thursdays ago, but he, he was really excellent, and I'm hoping we will definitely have him as our new state senator. And I will see people at the run for downtown, that's, that's a great event, and really, everybody should get down to party hearty on that day. And speaking of parties, I just wanna mention that today is the 53rd anniversary of Woodstock, it's August 16th. And he, my, my mom went up and helped at the medical tent. I worked for Michael Lang for almost two months, and I didn't go to the festival, 'cause I knew what was gonna happen, and I, it, it was just gonna be a little too crowded for me, but I did take people up and drop them off, so it, it was a big Hudson Valley event, and so I just wanna mark the anniversary. Thank you.
Rick Acsoon?
Good evening. I'm excited about the run for downtown. I don't know if I can run, I've run it once, and those blisters lasted weeks, but maybe walking this time. My kids helping out to, with a water station, so it should be a fun day, and the weather looks fantastic. For business for the third ward, we'll be having our monthly third ward meeting next Tuesday at 6:30 PM at Maple Hill Park, and Alderman Johnson has requested a blueberry cheesecake, so that's what's on the menu, that's right. Put it on the calendar. That's really all I have. As for back to school, according to the stores, that started on July 5th, which was completely out of line, but yeah, we're wrapping up this summer, I hope everyone has an enjoyable last few weeks before we go back to the madness of the school year, and that's all I have tonight.
There's Halloween candy already at the stores.
Oh, yeah.
Holman Johnson?
Thank you. Congratulations to the Baffa family. They're moving on, but I think they've created a very iconic experience for those of us who've lived here all this time. With respect to the Way We On the Project, I had the opportunity to review the remarks submitted by Senator Scoofus, as well as Alderman Kleiner, and I found both to be both complete and compelling. So thanks to you both for representing us the way you did. That's all I got.
Holman Joffe-Sois?
Yes, good evening. Yes, I had the opportunity to attend the, the, oh, Jesus. Yeah, Night Out Against Crime, so I wanna quote a little police department. Not too long ago, folks was talking about defending the police, you know, and, and now to see the community come together, and it was a lot of folks out there, and everyone had a good time, the kids was having a good time interacting with the police department, and it was, it was great to see, you know. Hopefully, everyone that was thinking about defending the police will think twice. Thank you.
Aldman Sorrow? Tobin?
I go by anything. Yeah, the Night Out Against Crime was great, thanks, thanks for everybody who put it on. It was great to see the whole community there, the whole larger regional community out, the kids having fun, shooting baskets, interacting. They had the canines there, it was very cool. Food, very night, and the perfect weather. I'd also like to thank Tony Baffas, as a, you know, Lions Club, we meet there once a month, we've had many a good meal and conversation, sad to see them go. And also like to thank everyone that is, you know, has been helping out, and all of the departments in the city, they have, they haven't skipped a beat, especially during this, you know, tremendous heat wave we had recently. I know I haven't mowed my lawn in a month, 'cause it's not growing, and so I'd just like to thank everybody for pitching in. Hopefully, I think I'm working a water station for the run for downtown, so I'm not gonna be running it. Thank you.
Okay, I just wanna reach out to everyone, everyone, my sister passed away last week, and everyone sent text messages and counsel, everyone, so I thank everyone for reaching out to me. She was diagnosed with breast cancer nine years ago, and she lived for nine years, they gave her one to two years, so she, she lived, she was a fighter, she was fighting right to the end, and I wanna thank everybody, text messages, calls, Rick came to my house, it was great, great to see the community come out, reach out to my family. Tony Baffas has the best real estate agent in, in Middletown. I feel like the Grim Reaper. I sold Lousberries, I sold Red Barn, and now Tony Baffas, but they became, when I dealt with them, they're like an icon, and a landmark in that building, and everybody's gonna say it's the Baffa building forever and ever. And the new buyers are going in there, they're putting a restaurant, and they reached out and said, we even wanna keep their staff, because how they work together, so we're hoping to connect both of them and, after the closing, and have the, have the staff even stay on, so with the new restaurant. And that's it. New business.
Good evening. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, authorizing the issuance of eight and a half million dollar bonds for the water line replacement.
Yeah, resolution possible by Alderman Witt, seconded by Aldman Green. See if Aldman Johnson stepped out?
He just walked out, he'll be back.
Yeah, on the phone?
He's coming back now, I believe.
Okay. I'll wait for him. Any questions? We're just doing the first resolution.
Aye.
Oh.
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Acsoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, accepting a $14,000 grant from the Orange County Youth Bureau.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Witt, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Acsoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, amending resolution 174-22, accepting a donation from the Middletown Elks Club.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Aldman Green, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Acsoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, authorizing a $5,377.50 budget transfer to purchase an employee ID card system.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Aldman Wright, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Acsoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, authorizing a $5,377.50 budget transfer to purchase an employee ID card system.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Aldman Wright, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Acsoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois, authorizing an agreement with Rand Commercial to serve as a broker for the city of Middletown.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois, seconded by Alderman Johnson, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Acsoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, accepting a $1,430 donation for the Parks and Recreation Department.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Witt, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Acsoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Wright, accepting a $1,000 donation from the Animal Health Center for an ice skate sharpener.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Wright, seconded by Alderman Johnson, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Acsoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, establishing an account line for the New York State Paver Pot Holes Program.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Johnson, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Acsoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, creating the position of administrative educational finance research services.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Aldman Wright, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?